All right, everybody ready to start? Susan Sandra Rochelle. Great. Welcome everyone. Good evening. My name is Meg Pierce. I am the Executive Director of the League of Women Voters of Pennsylvania. It's truly so nice to be here with you on this beautiful spring day. So you know, this webinar is being recorded, but as this is a Zoom webinar, your camera is turned off. So you don't need to be worried about your face being included in the recording. A reminder that closed captioning is available in Zoom. If you would like to enable closed captioning on your screen, just click Live Transcript on your Zoom taskbar. I'm going to drop a link in the chat showing you how to do that if you're unfamiliar. And at any point during the presentation, if we can help you with accessibility in any way, please just shoot us a message in the chat and we'll be of assistance. So we begin our time tonight with a land acknowledgement. We in Pennsylvania recognize that colonial Pennsylvania boundaries were first drawn in 1681 over original nations' lands. We in Pennsylvania acknowledge the land ownership of original indigenous peoples, honoring the Hutter and Ashoni Confederacy and the great nations of Pennsylvania, Erie, Iroquois, Muncie Delaware, Shawnee, Ohio Valley, Susquehanna, and Lenape. We honor all original nations of the past and those among us today. Next slide, please. A little bit about the League of Women Voters, if you're not familiar with us. We are a nonpartisan nonprofit organization. Our state office is proud to oversee a grassroots network of 31 local leagues all across the Commonwealth. Our mission is to encourage active and informed participation in government, increase understanding of important public policy issues, and to influence public policy through education and advocacy. To learn more about our work and to subscribe to our action alerts, there's lots of really helpful information on our website. And I'll drop those links in the chat as well. Next slide, please. So we're here tonight for the second event of Ballot Box Basics 2023. We designed these webinars because we know that elections and voting in government can sometimes be complicated, especially in 2023 when there are so many important races on the ballot. It's often hard to know where to start. So these monthly webinars will discuss the most important topics that you need to know as a voter in 2023. We have all previous recordings of previous webinars, including from 2022, on our website, so I'll drop a link to those in the chat as well, if you'd like to go back and watch any previous recordings. Tonight, we're here to focus on school board elections and why these races are so important for you as a voter to understand this year. We are really honored to be joined tonight by Education Voters of PA to discuss this important topic. Education Voters PA is a statewide nonprofit whose mission is to ensure elected officials adopt and implement a pro-public education agenda. They advocate for sound education policy and build and mobilize the public will to ensure that support for quality public education and an opportunity to learn for all children is a top priority for key decision makers. Throughout the presentation, we welcome and encourage you to ask questions using the Q and A function of Zoom. We'll leave about 10 minutes for questions at the end of the event. Also, if you'd like to engage with your fellow attendees in the Zoom, please use the chat function. So now I'd like to introduce our panelists. If you can share the slides. Thanks, Sam. So first, I'd like to welcome Susan Spica, the Executive Director of Education Voters PA. I'm sure she'll share more about herself, but Susan has been an active volunteer in her children's public schools in Shippensburg since her oldest daughter entered kindergarten in 2007. She became involved in public education advocacy in 2001, 2011, when she joined members from her community to protest Governor Corbett's proposed cuts to education funding. So she's been in this fight for a long time. I'm also happy to introduce Sandra Miller, Education Voter PA's Advocacy Coordinator. Sandra is the former Northeast Coordinator of Advocacy for PA Schools Work and a circuit writer for the Campaign for Fair Education Funding. She also started this work when her children were in kindergarten, and she's also a founding member as a parent advocacy group in New Jersey and a good volunteer for good schools in Pennsylvania. So both of these incredible women are well-equipped to tell us all about school board elections tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to both of you to get started.
Thank you. So I don't have a lot of extra information to share. So I'll do the presentation, but we have Sandra here who was on a school board for 16 years in Focken Valley. So she is a super expert on school boards, and I was on a school board in Shippensburg for four years and kind of understand, we both understand the process of running, the process of elections, and what school boards do. So if you have questions, we really welcome you to ask those. So I'm just going to share my screen and get started with this. So we're going to try to tell you what you need to know about school board elections in 2023. And I'm going to say this probably multiple times, but this is, for many children, the most important election of their entire lives for many, many different reasons. So this is a big one. Um, so what is the school board? A school board is a group of elected officials. They govern school districts for a fixed term length of four years. They are elected in these odd-numbered years, so during the municipal elections. And they have meetings. So they meet at least once a month. Their meetings are public, and they are required by law to post their agendas at least 48 hours before the meeting. So you should be able to pretty easily, if you are willing to like spend a little time going to a website, be able to know what your school board is voting on before they actually do any votes and kind of keep an eye on what's happening in your district. They also have committee meetings. Sometimes those meetings are a little harder to access. They're not necessarily always advertised and always super easy to find out about or super public. So, um, in Pennsylvania, public schools are a creation of the state constitution, and our school boards serve as the local legislative bodies for public schools within the framework of state laws. The school districts must comply with hundreds of individual state mandates, many of which are enacted by the state legislature. They also have to comply with state and federal laws. And so, um, you know, school boards have many roles and responsibilities. A key, really important one is to appoint the superintendent, and then they approve the hiring of other necessary employees. The school board members are typically not involved in actually selecting and hiring any employee of the district other than the superintendent. But when committees within a school district select people that they would like to hire, they go on an agenda and school boards approve the hiring of those employees. They levy taxes and they adopt an annual budget that's balanced and based on available funding from both state and local resources. They adopt courses of study and consultation with the superintendent, and they adopt textbooks. So, you know, school boards hire people who are professionals to come up with suggestions for the courses of study and the textbooks, and then the school board reviews and adopts those things. It's not like school board numbers are curriculum experts going out and learning the stuff and actually proposing these things. Um, school boards enter into written contracts with professional employees and into collective bargaining agreements with teachers. So they negotiate with the unions and they also like approve salaries for their administrators. So and they prescribe, adopt, and enforce policy around reasonable rules and regulations regarding school activities, publications, and organizations. Um, so an individual school board member really has no power. A school board applies its authority through the collective decisions, decisions of the entire board. There are nine school board members. Um, and so five people who would make up a majority have an awful lot of power on the school board. You need five votes. School boards should not operate like that, though. You shouldn't just have like five people doing whatever they want with four people who don't like it. School boards really should, and high-functioning school boards, work as a team of ten, together with their superintendent to make decisions for the benefit of their students, their schools, and their task pairs. Um, and school board members should not be involved in the day-to-day operations of a district. The board hires a superintendent who has the knowledge and experience to run a district. The school board should be involved in the planning and setting policy and then evaluating the results of the overall planning and policymaking that they decide on. So, um, why are school board elections so important this year? Um, you know, historically, school board elections have been pretty sleepy affairs. In many school districts, you know, you don't even have competitive races. There would just be people who would say, I want to serve on the school board in my community. I'm going to get my name on the ballot. I'll be on the school board. And it was just kind of, you didn't know if they were Democrats, you didn't know if they were Republicans. It didn't really matter because they would work together with people on the board and with their school leaders to really do the very actually mundane work of running a school district. Unfortunately, a couple of years ago, school districts became a target in the culture wars. And really extremist politicians came to understand that they could really have a lot of influence and impact and drive a political agenda if they could get people elected to school boards. So we really saw this start to happen in Pennsylvania in 2021, where in certain school districts, extremists, five extremists or more got elected to some school boards in Pennsylvania. And they really just veered away from like historically how we've seen school boards being run, and they started really pushing political agendas to the district. So we've seen, for example, on school districts in Lancaster County and other places, focusing on athletic policies that limit how transgender students can play on sports teams. We've seen in Bucks County, in other places, we've seen book bans. Um, with all of this, we see good fiscal responsibility and good management of taxpayer dollars just going out the window because school boards have a lot of control over how these dollars in their districts are spent. And they can do things like in Central Bucks, they hired a lawyer that they're paying $940 an hour to, to defend policies that are being challenged by ACLU and by Law Center as being discriminatory. So they also, in Central Bucks School District, hired a PR firm that was incredibly expensive. And so Right to Know Request found recently that they had spent $250,000 just on this type of like trying to try to sanitize their image in the public. Um, I think that we're going to see from Right to Know Request that they've spent a lot more than $250,000 only on like defunding their policies and trying to make it, make themselves look good. And having the power to take the hard-earned property tax dollars that people pay to their school district to educate kids and instead using those dollars for their little pet projects. And then we've seen in Penn Craft up in northeast, northwest, their solicitors resigned because the school board said, we're going to do these things. And the solicitor thought, I can't legally and ethically, I can't ethically do this. I have to close my door. My dog is barking. Um, and so, you know, now who's going to represent them and what is that going to cost? And what legal entanglements are they going to have in that district? And it's not just in Penn Craft. There's other places this is happening too. Um, and so the even worse than all of that is really what this is doing to divide communities. So there is a recent editorial that came out in a Pennsylvania paper that was in the Cooktown area. And, you know, the editorial said, "A powerful minority of well-organized vigilantes are imposing their views on everyone else. They're depriving other families of precisely the rights that they claim for themselves, deciding what children can learn and read." And so we are just seeing in many communities, small groups of extremists targeting school board members and targeting school board meetings. And, you know, in many cases, targeting individual children with these extreme ideas. And it's really wreaking havoc, not only on school districts, but in communities in general. Um, and polling shows like what we all probably intuitively understand. Most people do not want extremists promoting their agenda in our public schools. So there was a poll that was done in October by a group called Fisto. And they surveyed people all over the nation. And what they found was that parents are really fed up with political attacks on public education. And that 75% of Americans believe that state laws banning books, making it illegal for teachers to talk about LGBTQ plus students and racial issues, that it's about politics and it's not in the best interest of our children. So most people don't want this, but the problem is that most people don't really know what's happening, right? So we used to have all these little newspapers and they used to report on school board meetings. And you'd get your little newspaper once a week in your mailbox and you could read about your school board meeting. A lot of that has just vanished as newspapers have closed down. And then, you know, it's gone not only to just dark space, but also to like social media. So people have Facebook groups and community groups now that sometimes can get very ugly and very like rumor-filled. And so people don't really know what's happening. There's not a lot of awareness. And then school board members and school board candidates can really, you know, promote and enact these council policies without people really knowing. And I think it's really telling that, um, you know, Pennsylvania is one of the top three states in the nation for books that have been banned. All over the state, there are school boards that are quietly banning books, pulling them off the shelves. Um, it is, it is an alarming thing that is happening, and it is something that's happening very, very much under the radar in many communities. Um, so we have on our website, we created a little two-page document, and they'll email it out to you. But just like kind of how to talk about school board elections this year because it is really, 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 really vital that people go out, understand who to vote for, and that they vote for people and that you can help, you know how to have conversations with your friends and neighbors about these issues. So we'll make sure that you get this handout. But I think like just a few top things that people should be able to kind of articulate to your friends and neighbors and people who care about this, that we have extremists running for school boards. And if they're elected, they will use their positions to push a political agenda and impose their personal and religious beliefs on students and staff. These extremists disrespect educators, and they want to ban them from facilitating critical lessons and discussions with students about historical events and discrimination, as well as current political and cultural concerns. Extremists believe that they themselves should decide what students learn in schools, not parents. And extremist board members really put at risk the quality of our local public schools. Um, you know, and I think the flip side, if we want to talk about the positive side of all this, is that in our communities, parents and educators really actually continue to be partners, and they work together to ensure that every student has the opportunity to succeed. Pennsylvanians, we want thriving communities with good jobs and strong public schools where all students have the resources and opportunities to succeed academically today and in life after graduation. Pennsylvanians want their school boards to focus on ensuring that schools have the necessary resources and staff to provide students with safe, healthy environments and the individualized attention that they need. And, you know, we know that students should have the freedom to learn, and teachers should have the freedom to teach in their schools. Extremists should not be able to restrict the information that students can access and discuss in their schools. But that is their goal. Extremist goal is to restrict what students can access and what they can discuss and what teachers can talk about. Sorry there. So now we're going to get to like the nitty-gritty of like the actual school board races. So typically, when you go in in Pennsylvania and you get your ballot, you're either voting as a Democrat or a Republican. And you usually think that whoever's on your ballot is part of your party because you're voting on a Democratic or a Republican ballot. But for school board races, because they are to be nonpartisan and because like it really doesn't, it shouldn't matter what party you are, if you're going to be a school board member, school candidates can do what we call cross-filing. So they can file petitions to get their name on the Democratic ballot and the Republican ballot, regardless of what party they're actually registered with. So when you go in to vote, or before that, when you see the candidates who are going to be on your ballot, you need to know that the party listed on the ballot is not necessarily indicative of the party that the candidates registered under. So, number one. And then at the end of the day, the top vote getters in the primary for both the Democratic and the Republican ballot will appear on the ballot for the fall general election. So if somebody wins the Democratic side and the Republican side, they will go on the ballot, they will be the only name on the ballot in that race, right? Because they've won the Democratic and the Republican nomination. And so, um, many, many times, these school board races are actually the candidates win the races in the primary. By the time you get to the fall, in many cases, there won't even be a race. So this is, this is for many people, this is it for school board races, for school board elections. So how do you know before you walk in? Because I've definitely gone into vote on primary election day, and then like I have no idea who's on my ballot. So for school board races this year, it's going to take a little work. And if you do the work, then you need to make sure that you like really try to share it out with your networking people so other people understand it. So if you want to know who's going to be on your ballot, you can just log on and go to your county board of elections and just Google around and you will find the names of all the people who are going to be running for your school board race. So you might have an at-large district, you might only have your district. But if you put in your information, you'll figure out who is going to be on your ballot. So because we have so few newspapers around that can do the work, you're going to have to research candidates. So you can like look at them on Facebook, do Google searches, talk to people and try to figure out who they are. Now, if there are candidates that you support, if you look and you say, holy smoke, there are some people that I really don't want on this school board, and there are some people that I think are really great. You should find the people who you think are really great candidates and ask them how you can help. So these are incredibly low-turnout elections. When I ran for school board the first time, I won by four votes. Four years later, I lost by 10 votes. I mean, these are, these are decided by just a handful of votes in many cases. And it's all about turnout. It's all about who goes to the polls. So if you find a candidate that you like, it's very possible that they'll have a list of voters and they'll say to you, can you talk to 10 or 15 people who you know that I might not know and ask them to go to polls to vote for me? You could have an incredible impact on this race simply by just talking to your friends and neighbors and making sure that they go out to vote, because again, these are usually very, very low-turnout races. And you can also check Vote411Pennsylvania for information. And I'm not sure if that'll be ready for the primary, but you can keep checking back. So that lead of women voters kind of gold standard of a source for finding what's going to be on your ballot. So the primary election is on Tuesday, May 16th. As I said, these are very low-turnout elections. These races can be determined by a handful of votes. So like make sure that you vote. If you're voting by mail, that gives you time to like, after you vote, go and help somebody on election day. If there is somebody that you know would be a great candidate, ask if you could stand at the poll for them on election day and hand out like little cards and ask people to vote for them. Again, most people who go in to vote for school boards have absolutely no idea who these people are on the ballot. So being able to like do these little things can make a difference. So also make sure that you talk to your friends and you get them out to vote too. Um, and then just beyond school board races, we just, other ways that you can be involved. We have a school board monitoring slash alert program, and again, we'll send you information about that. But we basically ask people if they'd like to keep an eye on their school board, and if there's something that comes up that's a little, that seems not great. Um, we have a system where you can alert us, and we can, Sandra has like a whole series of different resources that she can give you to help you. So if you see something coming up that looks like a book ban or some kind of anti-student thing, she can help you with that. And so there is our information, and I think we were probably a little quick tonight getting through this, but we have plenty of time for questions. So that is the end of our presentation.
Are we taking, beginning to Q and A ourselves?
I'm happy to facilitate the Q and A. I see some questions already coming in. So thank you, Susan, for that informative presentation and for the Vote411 plug. Appreciate that a lot. So, so folks, please continue to use the Q and A function as we go through these. I'll just start with one of the questions that I saw in the chat first, and then we'll move over to the Q and A. So Diana asks, "In Pennsylvania and in some other states, there have been bills to eliminate cross-filing for school board candidates." She asked, "What are the ramifications of that?"
So, um, it makes it much more difficult for these to be nonpartisan elections. And so like depending on where you live, you might have a predominantly Republican voter base where it's like, like there are some women I know who are running in Shippensburg. It's about 70% Republican voter registration. It would be impossible to get elected in that district if you were a Democrat because you have a D by your name and you just can't win. So when you cross-file and everybody has both people's names on both ballots, people can actually look at the person that they want to vote for, and party does not play as big of a role in it. So I think that my sense is that eliminating cross-filing is probably something that incredibly partisan people would like to see so that they would know that in certain places, certain people would never be able to be elected. Do you have thoughts, Sandra? Anything else?
Yeah, the Pennsylvania School Board Association actually has come out on this when the bill was introduced here in Pennsylvania two years ago. They are opposed to it because they, you know, for the main reason of partisanship. But they also believe that there is an inherent lack of, of, of the, you know, us versus them. They, they really believe that, that having a more focus just on the children is where they should be, and it should be on education. So that was kind of the play they went at. They're a nonpartisan organization as well, so they, they were trying to land in a place, and they believe that it'll have an actual impact on the focus of a school board, which is to be pro-education. That's their statement that they had put out when they did it several years ago.
Great. So we had a question from Donald who wanted a little bit more information about the Central Bucks School District that hired the lawyer and the PR firm. He asked, "Was that actually part of their budget? How did that end up working out?"
Do you want to take it, Sandra?
Yeah, I just, as, as from conversations that we have, every, every school budget does have attorney fees included. Central Bucks already has also a public relations component of their budget because they do actually have staff that do it. So I would wager that this is coming out of something that's probably called the reserve. No one would be scheduling. I think the latest one now is they're predicting that it's at least $500,000, and they expect it to be a million dollars shortly, that 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 would not be something that they would have in their normal legal fees. When they did the Right to Know Request, it listed all of the attorney fees and a number of the fees, just so people understand. When they list that, that will include all of their activities, such as any activity with special education were listed in that Right to Know Request. So you had all of these law firms and not all those law firms are focused on this event. So you have to be very particular about who you add up into that category of defending the behavior of the policy changes. So.
Right, right. Thank you for that. So Kathleen asked that she has, she was surprised to see in recent municipal elections, some school board candidates actually only running on one party's ballot? Is there any reason why they would have chosen to run without cross-filing? Do you have any insight on that?
I mean, I think some people say like, I am this party, and I am running in this party, and this party is what I believe, and there is no way that I'm going to cross-file and run in the other party. Some people honestly might not know that they can cross-file. They might not have somebody who can circulate their petition from another party. I think it just probably is up to that, up to that person. But when I have to say, I looked at a school district and there were nine people running who were not cross-fired, and they were all running as Republicans. And I thought to myself, that tells me something about like that pool of candidates that not a single person was cross-fired. Um, that was a little odd, I thought, because usually, usually some people at least are cross-filled.
Yeah, in my district, the two most recent people that did not cross-file both chose because they did not want to have, and one was actually a D and one was an R. Neither of them wanted to ever say that they had a part, they participated on the ballot of another party. They felt very strongly about it. We recommend that you cross-file just because of the fact that so many of these decisions can be made by the primary, and we want to make sure that we keep people in the, in the loop.
Yeah, great. Um, so Stephanie asked a great question. She asked, "Are school board elections across the country staggered? Are all states having school board elections this year?"
You know, I don't know that.
I don't know what other, I don't know what other states do. Probably, I would assume they're, they're all different. I was in Wisconsin earlier and they were doing some, they have, I mean, everybody has elections that are at different times, so I would assume they're different in different states.
There's so many school districts across the country. They can't all be at the same time.
Right. And my understanding is not every state votes every year. Right. And and my understanding is not every state votes every year the way Pennsylvania does. So in those states, I'm pretty sure Colorado does not vote and every year. So on even years, they have all their municipal elections also, which would be school board. So I'm sure there are other states that do that too.
Thank you, Rochelle. Um, so Kathy asked, "What would be my personal legal liability as a school board member?" I'm not quite sure what Kathy was referring to here. Maybe we could have Kathy kind of share a little bit more about her question in the chat, unless Sandra, Susan, something really stands out to you top of mind.
Susan probably never got sued individually. But I had been on the school boards where they actually sued the individual members and um and we are covered by the liability insurance of the um school district. Um, but they can personally um um list you on a on a lawsuit. And in fact, there was a member of my, actually still a current member of of our soup. She was sued over the firing of a superintendent, which was a little bit different of an action than that was taken as a as a as a whole of a school board. And um and in order to protect herself, she actually moved all of her assets into a trust fund so that they can no longer um go after her. And she has a long history of of people suing her. So that's a different, that different ballgame than I. But um the majority of the time, you're represented by the school district when you're sued. Um, I was represented um both times by the, and I wasn't sued as an individual. They listed us as all board members, but they sued the entire school board. And um the attorneys from the school district um did handle all of the uh required documentation and everything that we had to pursue. We had no um first personal self finances um that we had to participate with.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's great to have your actual lived experience, Sandra, on this.
Yeah, it was an unfortunate situation and it was a very, it was um a federal case and we also were, um, we were also sued. Um, it was for a case involving racism. So it was very involved, very long process, very nationally covered. So um but it it is nice to to know that a as a school director, if you're making sure that you do the right thing, um, you do have the protection of the school district. And um and then you also have insurance liability um so that if things happen while you are are moving from place to place, um you can actually have insurance to cover that. So I would encourage people not to use that as a reason not to run for school board. Because some people have mentioned that. So I want, you know, that that you are um, at least in my case, in my school district, I was covered. Um, but I would always pursue, you know, I would ask in your own um solicitor at your school district, um how they handle that.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Alan had a a good question. Um, you know, you mentioned some current school districts where you're seeing, you know, problem, problems, problems there. Um, uh, he asked, "Is there a list of school districts with problems? So we can see if our school board is one of them." Are there, is there any like, you know, tracking that you do on your website, for example? How do you kind of follow what's going on?
Well, we do a master list, but we don't post the list. Um, we provide people the the ability to to um, you know, have some anonymous uh, you know, opportunity. Um, we have a closed group that Susan manages extremely well um called PA Wins, and that allows you to um participate on Facebook. And then you can use the the form to actually reach out to ask and ask for assistance. Um, and then we do um have regular meetings where we try to talk about what's been happening um so that people are up to date.
Right. Um, well, that's the end of the questions that came in the chat. Um, Rochelle, I wanted to turn it over to you to ask if you had any questions for the panelists or any final reflections. And I know that you wanted to talk about Vote411 as well.
Yeah, thank, thanks, Meg. I just wanted to um put a plug in for Vote411. I don't, I don't have the ability at this point to put Vote411.org up. I don't know whether Meg or Sam can do it. But this, this tool is magnificent. It will be ready for, it is ready for statewide judicial races for the primary. In twenty twenty-three, the state league does not populate Vote411 with candidate information because it's all municipal. So each local league right now is working very hard to populate your school board candidates, your county commissioners, your borough uh council people, your township people, your city people. And you see right at the front page, you put in your address. Once you put in your address, you will get not only your ballot, but you will get links to every single candidate in that race that responded to the request to put in biographical and occupational information as well as answering questions that the local leagues will have created. And I can tell you that all of the local leagues have asked very pertinent school board candidate questions. They create it uh based upon the issues in front of the school boards in their area. So it will be ready for the primary. Uh, the other thing that happens with candidate information in a lot of the local leagues is the information that is on Vote411 is taken and put into a printed voter's guide. And that voter's guide is either distributed by um personal delivery to schools, libraries, community centers. A lot of times, the local leagues partners with their local newspaper. The local newspaper not only develops the printed guide, but puts it on their a news website. So if anybody says to you, "I don't know, I I can't find any candidate information on my school board races." You can say, "Go to Vote411.org." You don't have to put Pennsylvania, just Vote411.org and put your address in. And you will have all kinds of great information. Uh, the tool also lets you compare. So let's say that there's four school board candidates and all of them agreed, you know, submitted their information. It is in their own words. There is no editing involved. You can click on each one of those candidates and see how they answered a question. See what their background is altogether. So it's, it's really a a magnificent tool that the National League created. The states um and the locals put in the candidate information. So I, I did just want to clarify that that primary information will definitely be available. Caveat, the primary information is only for the people that are registered Republicans and registered Democrats. In the general election, if there's a third-party candidate running for school board, they will also be invited to participate in Vote411 for the general election. So check back. I agree with Susan that a lot of times in these primaries for school boards and some of the other municipal, um, the primary becomes the only election. But I'm seeing, at least on the municipal level, more third-party candidates coming out. So uh check back after the primary to see who's on your ballot. So that's, I just wanted to put a a long plug in for Vote411.
Thank you so much. And I see that Stephanie just dropped a link in the chat. Um, she was reading about book bans. Thanks for sharing that, Stephanie. Um, Sandra and Susan, do you have any uh final reflections before we close out?
You know, huge thanks to the league for not just this, but like all the work that you do and that you have done to kind of to support democracy, to support voting, to help educate people. It's incredibly important. And just thanks to everybody for, um, like the first beautiful night of the of the spring slash beginning of summer, it feels like, um, for being here on a Zoom call because it's hard to make yourself get out of Zoom. So I really appreciate that you're being here. Um, make sure you like get people out to vote for the school board races. Like tell everybody that you can, like that this literally will be the most important election for many children in Pennsylvania. Because if you're a little kid and extremists take over your school board, they're going to be there for four years. And and that's, that can have a really devastating impact if, you know, and if you're a homeowner, I I wonder about how those people in Central Bucks feel and how they think about what if this goes on for another two years or another four years. And what that means when people are like, "I'm not buying a house in Central Bucks because I don't want that for my kids in their schools." It's incredibly important. So, so thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a great note to end on. Vote, vote, vote. Tell your friends, tell your family. Um, appreciate you both. Thank you again for being here and have a great night, everyone.